All set.
Trophy Club units for utility district number one, special session is now convened. The time is ten oh one a.m. Before we start our special session, I'd like for us to pause just a moment with a quick prayer for our associate Carl, who is not doing well in the hospital. We bow our heads for just a moment, please. We pray that our good friend and coworker Carl will recover from his accident. We will pray for him and think of him every day in the future. Thank you. Our special session, item one, consider and take appropriate action to approve bid and award a contract for the Solana water line relocation project and authorize a general manager to execute necessary documents. Jennifer.
Okay, good morning. We did take bids on, was that Friday? Yeah, Fri- was that Friday of last week? Yes, Friday of last week, we have those here for you. And also in front of you, we have a recommendation from both G and A consultants that is, they are the engineers for the developer, and a recommendation from the Wallace Group, our engineer, both of which have recommended the low bidder Kodiak Trenching and Boring. Their bid was two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Just to kind of refresh you on how this will work, this is the developer-funded project over Solana, in Solana to relocate our water line. And the developer will put a letter of credit up that will be for the bid amount plus ten percent in case there's change orders, and also to cover the cost of inspections, engineering inspections, which the Wallace Group will have an inspector do those inspections on our behalf. So we will then get the pay apps from the contractor, and they have the right to reduce that letter of credit as we move along as those pay apps are made. That's up to the developer. But so it does look like Kodiak has done quite a few public projects, water sewer line relocations, installations. You also have a large sheet that is a summary of all the bids that were received. If you want to look at that, they ranged from the low bid of two hundred and four, seven twenty-two, to a high bid of six sixty, oh four eight. But most of the bids were right there together in the, you know, two to three hundred thousand dollar range.
What was the ten percent for? You said letter, the developer's gonna put up a letter of credit-
Yeah, it's just-
For the bid amount plus ten percent.
A contingency amount in case they're, as they're doing the project, if there's any change orders that are needed that would increase the cost of the project. It's all paid for by the developer, but that covers everything if there are any change orders. The letter of credit will cover. It encompasses the, that there, that could happen.
Can I make a motion that we award a contract to Kodiak Trenching and Boring LLC for the amount of two thou- two hundred and four thousand, seven twenty-two point four five? And with the stipulation that developer put up a letter of credit for the bid amount plus ten percent contingency.
Plus the engineering inspection fees.
Plus engineering inspection fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote. All of those in favor. Neil?
Did he raise his hand? Did he ma-
I can't see. Okay. Hold on.
Neil, can you hear us?
Certainly not.
Okay.
Oh, well.
We have a quorum of three votes in favor.
Yeah, you have to allow him to vote because he is present.
I don't think he's here.
No sound.
I hear you, Neil. You can't hear us, Neil?
You have my mute.
It does show something on the screen there.
Should I come out and look at this?
Yes, please.
I can see him.
I don't know if you can hear me, but-
There we go.
As soon as Jennifer started talking, I couldn't hear anything. It was silent. You want me to call back in? Okay.
Oh, he can see you? Okay.
We'll just let him kind of, I'll go back over where we're at with this.
Okay, got it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I do.
Awesome.
Okay, Neil, there was a motion by Kevin to award the bid to Kodiak for two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two point four five, with a stipulation that the developer put up a letter of credit to cover the bid amount plus ten percent contingency and the cost of engineering inspections. Director Hayes seconded that motion, and they took the vote, and we were waiting for your vote.
Okay, that's when you realized I couldn't hear you.
That's right.
I read all the paperwork, and I agree with the motion, so I vote yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if it is unanimous, the motion carries. Director Thomas has just joined us, and I'm a little bit remiss, but I want to correct the record by saying that I did not announce that we had a quorum at the start of the session.
Now we do.
And now we do, yes. Okay. Item two, consider and take appropriate action to rescind contract offer for mowing services to Trophy Lawns Incorporated, and award contract to D and D Commercial Landscape Management, and authorize general manager to execute all necessary documents.
Okay, before I go into this item, I apologize. Steve Leonard is here as representing the developer. Are y'all here with Kodiak? Did any of y'all want to speak or on behalf of the-
I just appreciate the quick response on the meeting. If you can just call me when y'all are done with your items this afternoon, I'll sort of understand the paperwork that kind of got earlier.
Yes.
Can you stand up and-
Yes, say your name.
For our record, we'll hear it.
Steve Leonard, Leonard Development, five twenty, Central Parkway East, Suite four hundred, Plano, Texas, seven five zero seven four. I just appreciate y'all meeting quickly to get this contract approved and get the project moving. I would just say, Jennifer, you can contact me, and we'll work through the logistics on the, all the paperwork to make sure everything's there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
And you all are welcome to stay, but I didn't know if you really wanted to, so we, I wanted to give you the opportunity to leave if you'd like. Okay, so now on to the item regarding the mowing services. If you recall, I guess a couple of months ago, we awarded a contract to Trophy Lawns. As they've, as we've gone through the process, they were unable to provide proof of workers' compensation insurance. So staff is recommending that we move to the next low bidder, which was D and D Commercial Landscape. Their bids were very close. It was, Trophy Lawns was twenty-four, oh five oh. D and D Commercial Landscape is twenty-four, five ten. So we are now recommending that we award a contract to D and D Commercial Landscape Management.
Okay, I have a question. ILA says that the town will do the mowing, correct?
Yes, the contract for contractual services.
Have we received anything from the town stating they will not do that or live up to that obligation?
We have, there was an email from the assistant town manager stating that they will not be doing the mowing next year, this coming fiscal year. When we met with the assistant town manager and the town manager on just several budget items, at that time, they said that they were not going to do that, that they would have to contract it out themselves, and they, they didn't feel like that it would save any money, I guess, for them to do it and bid it out themselves, or, you know, add it on to their outsourcing contracts. So no, we've not received anything regarding the ILA. We've just been told that they will not be doing, performing the mowing next year.
Okay, well, my point being is that technically, we'll be in contract with two people to do the mowing, and you've been told, but I prefer to get something in writing from the town saying they're not gonna live up to their, you know, responsibility per the, or commitment per the ILA stating that they will not be cutting the grass per the ILA. So we have it on record that that basically nullifies that contract as far as the obligation to cut the grass, and then we can enter into this contract. I just don't want two contracts-
At the same-
At the same time.
Okay. Do you want to-
I mean, I don't have any problem-
As a suggestion, if you'd like, we can just bring this item back to the September fifteenth meeting?
And it's not gonna-
Why can't we just approve it with the stipulation that you get?
Yeah, I don't have any problem on doing that either.
Well, if I don't get that, then I need to bring it back to y'all anyway, correct?
Correct. Right.
Okay.
So for that reason, I'll see if I can get it by the September fifteenth meeting.
Why would they hesitate to send you a simple letter that says they're not gonna do it anymore?
Is that okay? It's not gonna mess anything up?
No, we're go- we've got this amount, we, we are budgeting the amount for this bidder in the budget, so-
And the bid's good.
Worst-case scenario, I guess, we'll give it to them.
And the bid is good until the fifteenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they did agree to hold the bid.
I suggest that we table this item till, and bring it back on the September fifteenth agenda.
Kevin, was that a motion?
I'll make a motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion's made and seconded. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it is unanimous. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding insurance proposals from Texas Municipal League and Texas Water Conservation Association. Jennifer.
Okay, this we are bringing back from the budget workshop. And if you recall, we did receive a bid from the Texas Water Conservation Association for a little lower on the insurance, but one of the stipulations at the time, they, they felt that we needed to get an indemnification added to our agreement with the town or a separate agreement, as the fire personnel are technically town employees, but, but driving district property. So I did ask Patricia about that, and I included in the packet her response, and I do recall that she's correct in that Pam has said that we can't enter into indemnification agreements either, that it's unconstitutional for government entities to do that. So basically, she's only really speaking for the town. Patricia said she could, that they could not do that, and that she believes, she recalls that in the past, she's been told we can't do that either. So we forwarded that information to, back to Drew, who represents the water, Texas Water Conservation, and explained that to him, and we also provided him a copy of the ILA. He came back and said, we, we told him that we would not be able to do that, so we would not be able to use that insurance. He came back and said, I think we find, found a way around the indemnification clause. It looks like with the combination of Texas Tort Claims Act, your ILA, and what Patricia stated, you have some significant protections built in if there is a large claim against the district. So at the time, there was a MVR, they were waiting to come back. MVRs for all the employees to come back, which they have, and they were all good. So I'll kind of let Terry answer from this point on, but it does look like we could go with their, with their insurance if y'all so choose to do so. Have you heard from Drew? I know the last, there was a, a social security number for one employee was entered incorrectly, so he had to, they couldn't get his driving record, but they've received that now, right?
Yes, and it was fine.
And so he's, at this point, they feel like all we would need to do is agree to go with them if that's what the board wants to do, or what?
He didn't share any other requirements with me, so I would assume at this point we're ready to, to go forward if the board chooses so.
So it is in your packet then, on, let's see. On page seven, there is a comparison of the two insurances, and it was not a hugely significant difference in the two, although it was about a three thousand dollar, about a three thousand dis- discount with Texas Water Conservation Association risk pool.
So what's the staff recommendation?
I recommend that we go with the Texas Water Conservation Association risk pool, as it's, you know, three thousand dollars cheaper. I think that if you compare the two, the two inclusions for each, their insurance has a much higher occurrence limits, deductibles, that sort of thing. I mean, lower deductibles are the same.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we do so?
Do so what?
Do what you just said, a recommendation.
Can you just repeat it, so it's on the record?
Jennifer, the name is again, is the proper name?
Texas Water Conservation Association Risk Pool.
And I move that we use that organization for this effort.
For the eighty-six, five oh five?
Right.
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second.
I just-
Discussion.
Just a point, I, I asked Terry to check into possibly reducing, see if they had a lower limit, because it's six thousand, it's, I think, three thousand on general liability, and also I asked her if we could break something out of it. There was a package deal from what Terry told me, and ten thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand with a thousand deductible was the lowest limit. Is that correct, Terry?
Yes, we couldn't, I think what it was you asked me about was the ten million, and reducing that down to six million to be comparable.
Right, right.
And they said we couldn't do it. We either had to take it up to ten million, or that was the option they had.
Okay, I just want to make that we did seek out a lower limit.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
I did.
Item four.
Captain.
Consider and take appropriate action to approve depository pledge agreement with Prosperity Bank as depository bank and the Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas as custodial bank.
We have approved using Prosperity Bank as our new depository bank, and one of the more formal requirements is that we enter into a formal depository pledge agreement. It has to be approved at a, a board meeting by the board, and so this is just part of the paperwork going through getting that bank set up as our depository. This agreement states that they will be our depository, they will collateralize our accounts, and that the safe keeping, safekeeping account will be held at the Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas.
Do we need to mention to give you authority to enter into this, or just?
You all will actually enter into this.
Okay.
Jennifer, do they have the capability like we discussed several months ago, with Dropbox?
Yes, this is the bank that has the, the e-box and everything.
I'd like to move that we accept, a, and we approve a depository pledge agreement with Prosperity Bank as depository bank, and the Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas as custodial bank.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item five, consider and take appropriate action regarding draft fiscal year 2016 budget.
All right, I'm gonna let Terry just go through the items that we have made changes to in the budget.
We added the meter changeout program that the board requested.
Terry, can you just say what page and item?
That's where I'm going. It's on page three, about the fourth of the way, or half of the way down the page.
Which one does that belong to, last packet? I'm sorry, the numbers are different.
Jim, use your paper one.
Page one I don't have.
Did you get the packet?
No, I got it, I, I got it. I had some problems this morning, I forgot to pick it up.
Okay, here's one for you.
Go ahead, I can use this one.
You can share mine. Yeah, I really don't need it, but-
I'm sorry, Terry, page three, which I-
Page three, about halfway down, it's under meter expense. You can see the new account. It's one thirty-five, six five oh five three, oh one oh. It says meter changeout program, fifty thousand dollars.
And that includes the replacement of a hundred and forty-eight residential meters and seven commercial meters. I had sent you all yesterday the first priority list. We looked at residential meters that were installed before two thousand and eight that had over two million gallons, and I sent you all that list, that was a hundred and forty-eight residential meters to cover for, for the residential side.
That's also here, right?
Yes, then, yes, and you do have a handout of those.
Let's get the staple on the right side, please.
And then there were, for the commercial meters, which are very, are, are more costly, the residential, I mean, sorry, the commercial meters, so we just are continuing with the next oldest commercial meters. This year, we've done the, or we're still in the process of changing out all of the Solana meters. That was this year's big changeout program, and that was, they, they were very expensive large meters. So now we're continuing on with that, and you will see that the seven commercial meters are, one for Club Corp, the Vineyards at Trophy Club, Lakeview, the Trophy Club Mud, Trophy Club Twelve, and Medlin Middle School. Those are the next, on the commercial side, the oldest meters, so fifty thousand dollars should cover all of those. If we do have additional funds left after we get all those changed out, we'll go to a next step in the priority list, and I will be bringing you all a more complete, for the future, priority list to the regular meeting.
Looks like a good portion of these are, are in Hogan's Glen, is that correct? I'm just looking through at the streets. And then you have one in Churchill Downs. Is that from usage, or?
It's from usage.
Because that meter can't be more than maybe seven or eight years old.
We did everything from, that was installed two thousand and eight and late, and earlier.
Churchill Downs was, was, I guess they might have had a house out there.
Yeah. Churchill Downs, I think, started before the Pid.
Yeah, because it was part in the mud.
And then Hogan's Glen and the Knoll, you know, those are some big water users.
Hogan's Glen's been around for, since ninety-seven or something.
All right, do you think they have any more questions about the meter changeout?
I'll try this again. On the meters inside the Hogan's Glen, are they one-inch meters?
Yes, they are.
Because we, at the last meeting, we were talking, you know, the meters under one inch, I think it was like thirty-five dollars per meter. What's the price on one-inch meter?
A one-inch meter's about three hundred and forty-three dollars. No, a five-eighths meter, I think, was two hundred and sixty-seven.
No sense?
Changeout.
No sense?
A, a five-eighths is about two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and a one-inch is three fifty-six, right?
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Since you mentioned the one-inch meter, and just for clarification, the one-inch is the line from our meter to the house. I mean, from the size that goes in the house, is that right? The plumbing?
Well, I mean, they can run whatever they like, line size they want to run to the house, that's just the meter.
The connection to the meter is a one-inch, which is meant to connect to a one-inch line to their house, but he's saying if they wanted to put a smaller line to their house for some reason, they could use a reducer. But, but the one-inch, yes, is talking about the size of connector on the meter for their service line.
That they built in the house?
Yes.
Like when we, when we say five-eighths, one-inch, we're talking about the service of the lines in the house, correct?
Yes. Well, the, no, the five, the, yeah, the five-eighths inch is-
Sorry, has nothing to do with the line in the house. What it is, it's when the developer comes in and puts the lines in there, we'll tell them what size taps to put in. So you may only have a five-eighths tap, you can have a two-inch line going to your house if you wanted to. Basically, what it is, a, a five-eighths meter usually will run about twenty-five gallons a minute peak. One-inch meter will run anywhere from fifty-five to seventy gallons a minute, continuous.
On the, on the five-eighths inch meters, it's actually five-eighths by three-quarters. On our side, the tap is a five-eighths inch tap, but on the house side, it's a three-quarter inch. They can run a three-quarter inch or bigger, I guess, if they put a adapter to make it bigger, but the, but the, what it's talking about in that name is the tap on the line. And those, those, the size of meter that's chosen for a home is a, that is decided by the plumbing code, and it has to do with the square footage of the house, of the distance from the meter, different thing, it's, it, it is not the size of line that we put in the ground that's serving that home. It has nothing to do with that. It ha, the, the size of the meter is up to, in our case here in Trophy Club, it's up to the town plumbing inspectors. They decide the size of meter that goes to certain homes, to, to every home.
Yeah, so just to make, make it clear for the five-eighths, one-inch, two, three, six, or whatever, it's decided by whoever does the building?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Usually, it's based off of fixtures.
Right, and the number of fixtures in the home.
Okay, thanks.
We deleted that part-time front office position. That was on page twenty-three, you just won't see it there anymore.
My application away, then?
On the fire page, which I think is the next big thing, on page seven. Under income, we added the forty thousand dollars from the sale of the ladder truck. It's the last one down on the income up there, one twenty-two, four nine nine oh oh.
Page seven?
Yes.
Under revenue.
Under revenue at the top, it says forty thousand from sale of ladder truck.
Neil, did you have a question?
No, I just, I was just pointing out to Director Thomas, it's underneath the fire budget. The last, basically, it's the last revenue line.
I'm sorry, I'm missing it. The last one here is miscellaneous income.
Yes, and that's where it was put, under miscellaneous income.
All right, thank you.
That was ten thousand, and now it's fifty thousand.
If you look to the right, there's a note.
I'm sorry, I was looking for the ladder truck specifically, so.
Okay.
I see it now.
Okay, and then on page eight, under the Gatsby thirty-four, we took the forty thousand out in order to reduce that, the expenses in order to reduce the tax rate, and then because we added the forty thousand for miscellaneous income, we were able to put that back in. And then because we added the forty thousand for miscellaneous income, we were able to put that back in. And then we were also able to put in a little bit extra into the GASB to account for the reduction in expenses that the directors asked for. Those reductions in expenses were on advertising, which is on that page eight. We reduced that to five hundred dollars for the new year. And we reduced a cost of eleven hundred dollars in fuel and lube for the chief's vehicle. That's a little bit further down the page. That came down, eleven hundred dollars. And then we just changed some minor things, comments, et cetera, within the descriptions.
Have we received any updates from the town, Danny, on those invoices that I asked about?
Yes. Well, we received, the, the thousand-dollar invoice that you specifically asked for at the meeting.
Thought there was nine thousand.
There, it was a thousand-dollar invoice for the emergency management.
Yeah, the emergency management.
Okay, that was actually invoiced to us in October, and it turns out that on the invoice, there was a clerical oversight, and it just wasn't carried through and paid on the next invoice. So we have, as of now, she's reimbursed us, and we have paid that.
Okay, and then there was one for radios.
Yeah, we had radios in.
And we, yes, and we just got that bill. It's in the process. It's in the AP batch to be paid.
Okay, I would like to suggest that going forward in fifteen, sixteen, anything that is purchased regarding fire be purchased on our side. P-cards, or however you do it, I don't know how you do it, but, so it goes in ours, and we aren't waiting on an invoice through the town. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
Pull your mic down, Danny.
Can you speak into the mic?
Pull your mic down.
Yeah, I mean, we set up the accounts with.
Okay, I, it just keeps anything tied to the fire department, you know, outlays that pertain to fire need to go through our accounting, so we aren't waiting.
PO system like we do now, it shouldn't be an issue, so.
We have a PO system that you can use.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to consensus or anything with the board, or?
Okay, the next change you'll see is on page twelve. You can see that we were able to get that tax rate down to point one-three, one-one-four.
On the fire side, have we got any numbers from the town yet for the salaries and stuff, or merits, or?
We got all that information previously.
Okay, so nothing has changed?
Well, I don't know. They haven't notified us anything's changed.
Danny, are you aware of anything?
No, no changes other than.
So council didn't do anything on merits or stipend?
They're doing the cost of living at four percent, two and two, and then they're doing the stipend of seven fifty.
Okay.
They're doing a cost of living?
I think they're doing two, two percent, two percent in October and two percent in.
That's not.
Oh, okay, the merit?
Yeah.
That, that's what they had told us, okay.
On page thirteen, there was.
Before you leave, Jennifer, what is the, how does this budget in total compare to last year's budget in total? Just rough.
The whole budget?
Yeah, the whole budget. And I've got a reason for answering the question.
It's on a comparison on change, page twelve, I think, isn't it?
That's the tax rate, but that's what my question, if you're, the general fund budget for this current fiscal year is eight-point-eight million, and for sixteen, it's eight million, a little over eight. On the fire department. I want to point out that the budget for this year for the general fund has a, I believe, what, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand out of reserves that is to cover the, or maybe it was, yeah, eight-hundred-ish, to cover the Fort Worth water line. So really, the budget for this year is about, is, you know, a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand more than last year on general fund.
Well, look, I'm sorry, all I really wanted to do, Jennifer, was, was one more time, which I did in the last meeting, is to compliment you and your staff. New fire truck, what, one-point-three million dollars, Danny? What's that ladder truck looking? One-point-three million dollars. We've got, starting work on a fifteen-million-dollar sewer plant. And you guys have, I mean, the major expenses that we've had to deal with and are having to deal with, and you're gonna be able to do it by reducing the tax rate. I just think that's phenomenal.
And that, all of those expenses are in the tax, so yes, that's reduced for the O and M, INS, fire department tax. Overall, is, is gone down from point one-three-three-three-nine to point one-three-one-one-four.
I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you.
What about us? Terry, next.
On page thirteen, there was a, one of the directors had asked the chief to look at doing some training for the captains, administrative training opportunities, and we did put some of that in here on page thirteen. Under schools and trainings, you can see office management classes, Excel access, fifteen hundred dollars. That amount was added. On page fifteen, which is our.
Can we, on Excel access training, do we not have personnel here that could train, you know, provide a training class? I mean, from my experience, the training classes on Excel and Access, you go in, they go through a syllabus, and it's like, here, 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 but it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't pertain to the everyday operation that we do. So is there not anyone that's, you know, you know, an ex, called expert at these things, like Terry maybe, or?
It's just getting, getting time to get down with them as far as getting these classes. Captain Beck's wanted to come up with the access. He is, he's a whiz at the access program, and he wanted to take one of the Excel programs and access. And, you know, that's just one of those classes you have to find to get into. I asked all three captains, you know, what they want, what they, what they'd like to see in their business management. All three of them have college in, 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 in management and stuff like that, and they're, they're all instructors, and they're all fire officer, at least two or three. Captain Hurd's level five on his offer, officer training. They all said this Microsoft and the advanced classes in Word and Access and Excel and stuff, so. I too would like to get into some of the Excel advanced classes myself.
Me too.
It's all this, so.
Okay, the next change was on page fifteen. We, oh, well, all we did was change a description on page fifteen. You asked Jennifer to check for street projects from the town, and at the time that the town responded to her, they did not know the street projects that they were going to be participating in yet. So we have no information on that. And then the last major change we made was on page nineteen. We rechecked the PID meter fees and the mud meter fees. And that's way down in that little tiny bitty print, way down at the bottom. You need your readers for that.
What, what page is?
It's on page nineteen. I can just tell you without you, I mean, you're, you're welcome to look at it, but we did have to change some numbers in there. The PID utility fees for this year were projecting sixty-nine thousand, and the mud tap fees were projecting fifteen thousand. That is based on our two percent growth rate, and acknowledging the fact that the, we expect the PID to be done in this next year, and the mud to be significantly slowed down.
Speaking about the PID billing, do they get the equivalent of the property tax on their monthly water bill? Is that where it appears?
Talking about, he's talking about the PID surcharge.
Oh, there is a PID surcharge.
And that is, is it, is it divided by twelve and one-twelfth appears on each month's water bill? Is that how it's done?
Yes. And I wanted to back up for a second. Terry did miss that. On the, let's see, the page for the taxes, page twelve. You all asked that we include the out-of-district and PID net tax values when we calculated the fire tax and assessment rate. And so if you look at the top, you will see where we added in the out-of-district and out-of-PID. That was values of three hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four, added in to the, to calculate the, the revenue requ, or, to calculate the tax rate and the fire assessment rate. Those were added in.
That includes the miscellaneous lots, like the gas wells?
The gas wells, there's a lot over by the town elevated tank. There's two homes. Is that, what street is that, by the dog park?
Trophy Park.
Trophy Park Drive up there, there's a couple, and then there's one in the mud that is included in this.
Okay, what, you have out-of-district and PID, then you have Denton County PID. What's the difference? What, what does that call out on the out-of-district and PID?
Denton County PID is the actual PID. That's the values for the Public Improvement District. Out-of-district and out-of-PID means that it's not located in the district, and it's not located in the PID. They're in the town, but they are not part of the Public Improvement District, and they are not part of the mud.
So it's out of, out of, okay.
Out-of-district and out-of-PID, you could say.
That's what was missing, okay.
There was just, wasn't enough room on the line to put out of twice, so.
That completes the list of the changes that we, we made.
I have a question, Terry. I go around all the time spouting that the net revenue contributed by Solana, in other words, the revenue minus the expenses. I go around spouting twenty percent, but I don't know if that's still accurate or not, and I doubt if it's in, appears anywhere in the budget. But I would like to know what percentage of our total net revenue is contributed by the Solana. Still twenty percent, or?
Jim, I think it's gotta be less simply because we have many, many more homes.
Yeah, I think it has to be less also. So I, you know, if it's fifteen, I'd like to know what that number is.
Okay, we can look at that.
Does that include taxes?
Jim? When we did our CAC report, it was roughly nineteen percent, and that was almost two years ago.
No, this would be water, not the taxes. What I'm talking about, Neil, is the water, wastewater operation. What, because I think the percent of contribution on taxes is not necessarily the same percentage that you'd have for water wastewater. And maybe what I'm looking for is a combination of the two, you know, between taxes, but I'd like to have them separated. How much tax contribution comes from Solana versus the total for mud one? And how much water wastewater net revenue comes from the PID versus the total?
Jim, you're talking just strictly dollars, right?
Yeah, yes, I'm talking dollars.
Well, percentage.
Well, the percentage would be developed from the dollars. You'd have to get the dollars.
Yeah, so you want the dollars and percentage.
Right.
We can work on breaking that out and bring it to the meeting.
Next hour?
The next meeting, hopefully. We will have to get the values for Solana separated out by the county, and that takes a little bit of time.
Because you have the total value of the mud, and you have, you don't have Solana down here separately, which is about two-hundred-and-twenty million, but.
Is that what Solana is this year, Neil, two-twenty?
It's around two-twenty.
Wasn't it up in the two-seventies and eighties last year?
No, well, that's, that's when you count the, the Tarrant County properties that are in Trophy Club, namely on the north side of one-fourteen.
Oh, okay.
You know, where the hotels are, and, and also, you know, down where, basically Dennis Sheridan's house is, where the line crosses through his front yard.
So it's up about two-twenty now. It used to hang around two-oh-five for years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm being conservative. It might be two-twenty-eight, but I mean, I think if you, you had two-twenty, you'd be in a ballpark. And for the tenths of a percent that you're missing, it won't be an issue. I do like to go, want to go back to one thing on the streets. I read your, the emails you forwarded to us, Jennifer, on your discussions with the town. Is there, it, there seem to be a sense that they may come back later and add streets to be worked on in two thousand and sixteen? Are they going for a bond issue for roads, or do you have any feel for what they might be doing?
No, I mean, we don't really have any information. I think they are working to identify some streets. Mike isn't aware of this, but I think I read somewhere, maybe in their budget, that they, they're using up some funds from a bond issuance. This, this, but I could be wrong. But I thought they were using bond funds to do the, the streets they're going to do. They just haven't identified exactly what it's gonna be yet.
Can we, can we go back one more time to the town? Because obviously, it looks like we're gonna approve this on the fifteenth meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we, if these numbers are gonna change, we need to know before the fifteenth.
They're only gonna change if you all decide you want to do those street projects. And should you decide you want to do those street projects, we will have to find funding either from reserves or a short-term loan, some other method, because there are no funds available in this budget to do those street projects. So I don't, I think that it's, we could certainly ask again, and we can certainly try to bring that back to the next meeting, but I don't think it's gonna impact our budget any way about it, because other than bringing in funds from reserves or deciding to issue some sort of short-term loan to cover it if we decide to do those projects.
I want to go back, Terry, to the net revenue and taxes over in Solana. Neil, when we did the CAC, Neil had all the expenses itemized out that pertained to Solana, and then he had the revenue. So that would be a model for, and maybe you could discuss it with Neil, because it, it is a kind of a detailed calculation of what expenses apply to Solana, what, what percentage of the tax base are they, that sort of thing. So that, that layout is available in the CAC. You may already know this, but.
Is, is the fifth firefighter in, out, where?
It's in.
Okay, but we haven't decided on that yet, so the fifth.
The board gave no direction on that, so it's in there.
I, I think the fifth firefighter is in, definitely, Kevin.
Yes, we did approve that.
We didn't, we told to leave it in. We didn't approve it.
Yes, well, that's.
But I, I mean, I have, I mean, with this automatic aid thing, it's like, okay, what's the purpose of it, but?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. What I want to say is, I'm not trying to make this your deadline, but it sort of is your deadline. We need to finalize what you think you want the budget to look like, so that we can bring it back, and we can go ahead and advertise the, the tax rate. So on the water and wastewater revenue side, it's not so important that we have it so much finalized as on the fire side, so that we can give the town their rate to advertise for the PID, as well as us get the rate out for the fire department. So if you all want to go back and look at anything in the fire, I think today's the day to do that, so that we can make those adjustments.
Danny, we're talking about the fifth firefighter, and we're out of the room, but the automatic aid, actually, you know, the whole purpose of the fifth one is to have people, you know, in and out and on site. The automatic aid, from the way you described it last meeting, that pretty much solves a mountain of people that are on a firesite, if there's a fire. The, you know, I've always been, you know, pushing the volunteers program to supplement the full-time, not to take over. the full-time, not to take over, as some people have said in the past, but to supplement them, so there's additional hands on deck when something comes up, but, you know, how can we, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, justify the fifth firefighter if you have automatic aid.
The fifth firefighter puts, uh, three people on that truck going out the door, get him on the scene, uh, to get things started before the other departments get there. Uh, we've got other departments coming in that direction, also it gives the ability to, um, run the department with four guys with two and two, two on the engine, two on the medic, two on the engine, two on the truck, and give, uh, a person a, a chance to, um, take vacation or go to training or whatever, without having to go back to the budget and backfill with overtime or, or stuff like that, so.
But the, as far as automatic aid, the way you described it was that the close, the people closest would respond, and to make sure everyone arrives at the same time.
Right, but we're still, we're still fighting that number, uh, Director Carr by, uh, seventeen ten says you put eighteen people on the scene within the first nine minutes of the, or eighteen minutes of the fire, and we're not, we're, we're putting twelve with what Ronald gives us and what Westlake gives us, we're still putting, we're working on the standard, but we're still, you know, we're still under the number.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, actually, I wanna go back to page thirteen, because something, that reminded me of something that I wanna bring up. Danny, on page thirteen, this shows your training and travel. On this first account, you show volunteer, is that the travel dollars that you're putting in for volunteers? Because I was not aware that we had budgeted for volunteers to, uh, to go out of town for the fire truck thing, I thought that was only for paid. And I think that it's important that you point out to us which of these truck cla, training classes are for volunteers.
The training classes, uh, is, is all intermixed amongst the TCC live training, uh, the certification training, anything that we can get them into, as far as the same thing we send the fire guys, is, it's all rolled into that. The SF, the volunteer up in, uh, dues and memberships, that's their state firemen's and fire marshals, that's how they're accredited for, uh, their training hours and stuff, through that organization.
Where it says SF, SFMA, that's more like dues.
That's the volunteer up, uh, equivalent to the Texas Fire Commission, which the paid guys are under.
Okay, so volunteer doesn't mean volunteers, it means they voluntarily join that organization?
Uh, yes, and it keeps, they get benefits, they get, they get health benefits and, or not health benefits, but, uh, death benefits and, um, things like that.
Why, I mean, maybe I missed something here. From what I heard, we sent a volunteer up to Wisconsin?
Yes, I sent one of my volunteers, I sent, uh, Mr. Hawkins, uh, we had an open slot open, you know, we had money in the budget for, uh, so many people to go to, uh, to, to do the truck checkouts, the, the pre-construction, the post, paint, and the final. Uh, when Jennifer and, and none of the board, we had some money left in there, so I offered it up to, uh, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Hawkins has been with me for twenty years, been a very vigilant volunteer, and, uh, every time there's a, a situation where he needs to drive the truck or drive the engine or the ladder truck, he drives it, so, uh, I gave him the opportunity to go to Wisconsin.
Did we include that in our insurance that, for volunteers?
It should be under.
I don't know.
I don't, it is not in TML.
I don't know, I'll have to look.
We do not have, where volunteers can drive vehicles in TML, and so now that you bring it up, we need to look at that with the new.
Their name should be, I mean, they're, well, I mean.
If they're qualified to drive the apparatus, they'll, they drive the, they drive the pickup.
There's a difference for your insurance if they are a volunteer or an employee, and I was not aware that we had volunteers that drove equipment. So we need to look at that before we finalize the insurance, that'll be an addition.
Okay.
Okay, well, so back to this then Danny, what I'm understanding is, there are some classes for volunteers included in one twenty-two, six, zero, zero, eight, zero, that is where the classes are contained for volunteers.
Yes, we have all three shifts going down to, to the college, uh, this month, uh, on a night live burn, all three shifts, and the volunteers pick a night to go, uh, on the training, so they're all included in, in anything we do as far as training goes. If we offer a class to the, or offer in-house training or whatever to, uh, staff, the volunteers take that class too.
How, how often are the volunteers available right now? You said Mr. Hawkins been there twenty years?
Uh, yeah, he makes a lot of the after-hours call stuff, um, and he makes whatever he can as far as after-hours work or whatever, um, I can't, I can't put an hour to it without, looking at my records or whatever, but.
So technically, he could be a fifth firefighter?
Um, yeah, if he could drop a real job, but.
Thanks.
He's, he's an aviator, uh, he's a mechanical engineer with, uh, um, one of the people that big, um, build big.
Bell or Vought or something?
Something like that.
Okay, what else, anything else on the budget? Uh, Jennifer, uh, what, uh, what action, if any, should we take at this meeting regarding the budget?
There's really no action you all need to take, other, um, unless there are some changes you would like, just provide direction to us, and that way we can make those and bring it back to the meeting next, or week after next. Um, but otherwise, uh, the, the action that we would need from y'all is to, um, is actually the next item, just simply to, um, you know, adopt this proposed, these, these proposed ra, tax rates, they are proposed, they are not the tax rate, and authorize us to notice, to, to do a notice of a public hearing.
All right, uh, are there any, any other, uh, concerns regarding the budget, any additions that anybody feels should be made at this time?
So everybody's on the same page as the fifth firefighter?
Four as I know.
I'm, I'm not for it, but it doesn't matter, you know how I feel.
Jennifer, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this preliminary budget and that we advertise as suggested.
About the tax rate Jim, or I'm back on the rap?
Yep, tax rates, on page twelve.
Item number six, right, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, that's in item six.
Yeah, uh, Director Thomas, let me precede that by reading item, uh, number six, which you would. We are not required, or Jennifer did not suggest, that we need to take any action on the, on the, uh, draft budget, unless there's other items that wish to be added to it. So we move on to item six, adoption of the twenty fifteen tax year proposed tax rates, item A, adopt proposed district debt service tax rate, B, adopt proposed district maintenance and operation tax rate, C, authorize notice and public hearings related to the adoption of final tax rates, and D, other action related thereto.
Okay, and then I think.
Discussion or action.
Uh, Jim, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get out ahead of you, but I, I now.
Okay, now.
I now like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed district service tax rate, the district maintenance and operation tax rate, and that we authorize the general manager to place a notice and public hitting, hearing related to the adoption of the final tax rates.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
Does it, so on the fifteenth, what are we gonna do as far as the budget?
Nothing, I, I won't even bring it back unless you all would like for me to bring it back to the September meeting, because we, uh, decided to move the tax mo, meeting, if you recall, and adopt the budget for Friday, September twenty-fifth, so that we could do it in the evening. I'll be happy to bring this back to the September fifteenth meeting if you all would like another opportunity to look at it, but with no changes, I don't really see any.
Yeah, there's, the only thing, in the past adoptions, we've always mentioned what the tax rate was, what the O and M was.
You're go, you are not adopting this tonight, you're just accepting the proposed tax rate, and we will, you will actually adopt it in, at the end of September, September twenty-fifth.
That's what I was getting at, just to make sure.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Uh, if not, let's call for the vote, all of those in favor.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Other action related thereto, I assume that there isn't any, uh, at this point in time, uh, we were very fortunate that we're down to the point to which we can adjourn the meeting at eleven oh one AM.
I got one more thing.
Oh, okay.
Uh, President Moss and Directors, we will have a new truck in the station tomorrow.
Okay.
Really?
It'll be here tomorrow, it's been in Denton for two days, it came in Monday night, uh, in the make-ready phase, they, uh, cleaned it up and did their checks, the engine checks, the pump checked, the ladder checked, uh, so, um, we will get it tomorrow.
Are you gonna put your big American flag on it and drive it around town?
We're gonna have to teach people to drive it.
What are we gonna, it's gonna fit in there with the other?
Yes, yes. And we will, it'll probably stay out of service for probably a month, uh, in, in order to us to get all of our training done and all the equipment on and stuff like that, and, uh, the training is the big thing, so, uh, we are going to have an open house, fire prevention open house on October third, and have a push-in ceremony on, on, it's, at the same ceremony, so.
October third Danny?
You push it up the hill?
Yeah, we'll push it up the hill. It weighs, uh, seventy-four thousand pounds, and, uh, I think, uh, I think Jim can push it, so.
Thank you Chief Thomas, uh, any other announcements before we quit? If I don't hear any, I will repeat again, uh, this meeting is adjourned at eleven oh two, thank you.
Thank you Jim.